Well, welcome to the eighth in our series of political candidate forums in advance of the August 23 primary election. This forum, a cooperative production of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, the Tallahassee Democrat, and WFSU Public Media. Our candidates today are running for Tallahassee City Commission Seat 3. I'm Tom Flanagan from WFSU Public Media. I'm joined by William Hatfield from the Tallahassee Democrat and Trish Neely from the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee will be questioning the candidates on various topics. So let's get a quick look at the ground rules and meet the candidates.
The candidates for City Commission Seat 3, sitting left to right in alphabetical order, are David Bellamy and Jeremy Matlow, who is the incumbent in this race. For those of us watching, for those watching us on social media, please hit the share button and help all your friends see today's discussion. Here is how the forum will work. We will rotate which candidates get to answer first. We have a lot of questions, a lot, so we're going to ask the candidates to keep your answers to about 60 seconds, sometimes shorter for follow-ups. We will keep time and we will make it clear when your time is up because you will hear this. You don't have to come to a dead stop right then, but please finish your sentence and we're going to move on. In the middle of the forum, we will have the Fable the Lightning Round, and that is when we ask you to keep your answers to just one sentence. At the end of the forum, you'll have 90 seconds to make the case directly to voters. You can share your website or any other information at that time.
And for those of you who are watching on Facebook and you have a question for the candidates, go ahead and type them in the comments section and we will get to as many of them as we can. Time is very limited, so you can improve your chances of your question being asked if you keep it brief and definitely keep it polite and make it a question that's applicable to both of our candidates. So candidates, any questions before we get started?
No ma'am.
Questions.
All right, then let's just jump right in with the first question.
And we will jump in with this question, and we'll start with you, Mr. Bellamy, if we could, and you have one minute to respond here. What is the number one issue, in your opinion, affecting the city of Tallahassee and why?
The number one issue is poverty. Poverty, poverty, poverty. Poverty leads to all of our ills. It leads to the crime rate. It leads to a lack of affordable housing. It leads to gentrification. It leads to poor education. We have got to fix our issues with poverty. And the way to do that is to provide our people who live in poverty with an opportunity to succeed with a good career. Not just a job that pays $15 an hour where the most you can hope is $31,000 a year, which is still barely over poverty, but a real career with benefits, advancement, retirement. You fix poverty and you will not need to fix anything else.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Matlow, your turn on that one, please.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, poverty is the issue, but the real question is how are we solving it? You know, right now, we see most of our tax dollars going to benefit well-connected individuals, people who have an inside track to the system. I grew up in Tallahassee. I was raised by a single mother of four kids, and I can remember on the South Side living in poverty. I can remember waking up hungry, too hungry to even get out of bed and start my day. My mom had this car with this rattling muffler, and I would hear it coming home, and it sounded like a dinner bill. It meant we were going to get to eat that day. Thousands of children in our city are food insecure. 25% of our city lives in poverty, and when we add working people struggling to pay their bills, that number declines to nearly half. And what we're seeing in Tallahassee is our spending priorities aren't addressing that. Instead of when we have the opportunity to help people get out of poverty, we give $27 million for luxury stadium improvements. That's not right, and it's the main reason I'm running again.
All right, we're going to shift over to a hot topic of crime here, and this question comes to us from the Urban League. By our count on tallahassee.com, 13 people have been killed and 50 have been injured in 77 serious shootings this year in the capital city and county. Every forum, that number goes up. Recently, we saw a former Marine who was gunned down as he answered his door at an apartment complex. What specific initiatives will you take to make our communities safe from crime? Jeremy Matlow.
Yeah, thank you. And this question, I think, is top of mind for everybody, and my heart truly goes out to all the families that this has affected in our community, because I think we all feel like even one death from gun violence is one too many for Tallahassee. I think our community realizes that if we reduce the poverty rate, if we create opportunities for alternative directions in people's lives, we will see our crime rates start to go down. But there's also a need to address this immediate gun violence issue that we're facing. That's why last year, or this year, the City Commission dedicated $1 million out of this year's budget solely to gun violence reduction strategies, and we'll be taking proposals around the community. But we're looking for something new that can impact now, not long-term solutions to bring the numbers down. But how can we communicate with people who are engaging in this activity? How can we look at restorative justice? How can we look at gun violence intervention? How can we take real money and find a solution to better our community today?
Thank you. David Bellamy, same question.
So the long-term solution to crime, again, is do away with poverty. Fix poverty, fix crime. The intermediate-term solution is to work on things such as our intervention programs. Tempo has done an excellent job of taking at-risk children, getting them through college or a GED with a little to no recidivism rate. We also have good programs that provide excellent role models, such as 100 Black Men, the Lamplighters. Those groups need to be encouraged. We also need to look at diversion programs that keep children out of the criminal system. We have a civilization program that should be encouraged. In the short term, the way we need to fix this is by working with neighborhoods to figure out how they want the police to serve them, and then the police need to deliver that service. But we have to be willing to stand up to groups that don't live in that neighborhood that then intervene and try to get the police to leave. If we are serving a neighborhood the way they want to be served, we have to stand firm when people that don't live in that neighborhood are unhappy about it. The neighborhood is what matters the most, and they should be served as they want, within reason.
Thank you. As a follow-up for 30 seconds, we heard from numerous speakers at the City Commission meeting last week that we should be taking money from the law enforcement budget and funneling it into social services. Is that a concept you support? David Bellamy.
No. Defunding the police is not a good plan. I think Jeremy has alluded to it before. I don't know if he's ever said that, but I do not think that's a good plan. However, it is clear that our social programs and mental health programs are woefully underfunded. I just don't think that you solve the problem by robbing Peter to pay Paul. Both entities are needed. So we need to invest primarily in mental health and social services, but not at the expense of law enforcement.
Thank you. Jeremy Matlow, same question.
Thank you. Yeah, I think our social services are severely underfunded when we have our homeless service providers tell us the money it would take to address the issues. When we look at mental health issues in our community, when we look at the food deserts and the inaccessibility to food, people are crying out because the basic needs of people in our city aren't being met. You know, that's where we start by increasing the budget, what we're funding for social services. At the same time, when you pick up the phone to call law enforcement, most people expect somebody to respond in a reasonable amount of time. So we have to provide the amount of resources to address the current situation we're in now.
And I mean, what do you think of the idea of pulling from the law enforcement for social services? Or do you think there's enough for both?
I don't think it's either or. I think we look at the budget holistically and see how we can provide social services with the spending we already have.
Okay. Jeremy Matlow, you've got the next follow-up question, another 30 seconds. The city is poised to invest $1 million annually over the next five years to stem the bloodshed from gunfire. This money kind of seems almost magic wand money. There's not strings attached. We've been talking about this problem for decades. What is something specifically we can do with this money to get the most impact?
Sure, we're going to largely take community feedback on these ideas, but one I would look at expanding the restorative justice programs we already have. Out of Palmer Monroe Teen Center, a great group operates a program with our youth, and they bring offenders in who then can reach out, if the victim is willing, to restore, connect in a way that makes them take ownership of the harm that they cause. And I think it's, everything we look at, it's connecting with individuals on a one-on-one level, because if you commit a small crime, you know, that's a segue to committing a larger crime. So if we can start interacting with kids early on, we can make real progress.
Thank you. David Bellamy, same question.
I would invest in intervention programs, role model programs. Again, Tempo has shown itself to be a great program, taking at-risk children and some that have actually already gotten in trouble and getting them off that path. That is a proven program that works, and there's still tons of at-risk children we haven't reached. Again, I think proven programs such as 100 Black Men, Lamplighters, those programs work by giving children a good role model to have that maybe don't otherwise. So without knowing all the details, I would emphasize spending money on those types of programs.
Okay. Last follow-up on this topic. How would you rate the current effectiveness of TPD in addressing the issue of gun violence on a scale of 1 to 10? David Bellamy, starting with you, 30 seconds.
Well, after it occurs, I would give them a nine. We have a great rate of solving our violent crimes, much better than many cities, a fantastic rate of finding offenders and arresting them quickly. I think avoiding crime, it's hard to grade them because they do what they're told. They're very good at following orders and following policy. If we're unhappy with the job they're doing, deterring violence, we need to look at City Hall. One of the first things I would do if I won is tell the city manager, I expect him to pick a police chief out that he trusts. Let that police chief do his job, and if he doesn't trust him, fire him, but quit micromanaging it. So we really can judge how does the police department do in preventing violence.
Thank you. Jeremy Matlow, same question.
Sure, and I agree. I think the police's job is to respond to crime, and at certain levels, they may be able to deter displaced crime, but we can't really put the burden of reducing crime on the police department. It goes back to funding, reducing poverty and funding the services that need to get people to commit less crime, so we can't do that from, TPD can't deliver that for us. They can only respond.
And jumping on one quick thing that you said, Mr. Bellamy, I mean, you talked about picking the police chief. What is your level of confidence with the current police chief? Just 15-second answer really quickly.
I worked with him. I liked him as a police officer. I trusted him as a police officer. I wish he would do more to change his image after having gone to the religious retreat that many LGBTQ folks were skeptical of. I wish he'd do a better job with that. But I still don't know what kind of police chief he is. I know what kind of officer he was, but until he is allowed to run the police department without micromanagement from the city, I don't know what kind of chief he is.
Jeremy Matlow, same question.
Sure. You know, as city commissioners, our job is to hire a city manager that then supervises and chooses the staff that he sees fit. So the question to me is, am I happy with the way the city manager has responded to these issues? No, I'm not.
We'll get to that later, but in the meanwhile...
Okay, so we're going to move to affordable housing. I have a couple of questions here. And we'll begin with David Bellamy, please. What is the first specific action you would propose to address the need for affordable housing beyond what is already being done? And you have one minute.
I think one of the best things we could do is find a way to provide land for affordable housing, and one easy way would be when we get unsolicited bids for land downtown that maybe the city doesn't want. We tell that person, well, here's what we want, bring it back and we'll trade, but we need land to use. One of the biggest problems with building is permitting. If the city would permit it themselves so that you have land that is permitted, then put in infrastructure such as the roads and the sewer, then you can put an RFP for builders that are willing to build at a fixed rate of profit. Right now, you would invest $110,000 if you bought the lot, got it permitted, and put in infrastructure, then another 140 for a house. That's a $250,000 house at best, and we're already out of the affordable range. You have the city provide the land, the permitting, and the infrastructure, and a builder could build a house for $140,000 that's built to the standards written by the city's permitting process.
Thank you. Same question.
Sure. Hundreds of religious leaders came together and asked the city to establish a local affordable housing trust fund and to fund it. I 100% support that. We have to put our dollars where our priorities are, and looking at land the city already owns, we own hundreds of acres that we could make available for things like low-income housing and affordable public housing, but we have to actually do it and put our resources there. We can't keep deterring our resources to other initiatives. I look at Blueprint. Blueprint's a great opportunity to provide land that state statute allows for us to acquire for affordable housing purposes. Instead of, you know, big developer giveaways in Mulaney, instead of Doak Campbell Stadium giveaways, why are our most flexible dollars not being used to address our number one issue?
Okay. And Jeremy Matlow, a follow-up, please, and I'll start with you. Where specifically is the appropriate place to build affordable housing?
The city of Tallahassee.
But where specifically?
Everywhere in the city of Tallahassee, we should be building affordable housing. When we look at affordable housing, it's a scale, right? Everybody's experiencing it. The very low-income, very impoverished people are getting hit the hardest by raising rent rates, but also people in the middle class who are just trying to acquire their first home. Those properties are getting too expensive. So when we talk about affordable housing, it's not one neighborhood, it's not another neighborhood. All across our city, we need to have housing attainable for all price points.
David Bellamy, same question.
Everywhere. We shouldn't be trying to decide, rich people will live here, middle class will live there, poor people will live there. It needs to be everywhere. The city needs to be balanced. Everyone needs to be treated the same. Everyone should have equal opportunity to live in any part of the city they'd like.
One quick follow-up. What is an affordable housing rental price, monthly rent, in your estimation for Tallahassee? David Bellamy?
So now I know that rent can be easily over $1,000, $1,500. The federal government says it should be no more than a third of your income. So if you've got a $250,000 house with a $10,000 down payment, you've got to make about $70,000 a year to be able to afford that house. And in Tallahassee, the median income is $25,000. So you can see what sounds like maybe affordable to some is completely worldly out of the reach for others.
Jeremy Matlow, same question.
Yeah, the general standard people accept is around 30% of your income. What does that mean for, in Tallahassee, people are making a minimum wage, even employees for the city of Tallahassee of only $10 an hour, so what is 30% of their income? We need housing that people can obtain at $400, $500, $600 a month, and right now, it's hard to find something under $1,000. Where are those people going to end up? A lot of them may end up homeless, and we're going to bear the burden of that also. So we have a tremendous responsibility to take on this issue and build affordable housing for the lowest-paid employees of our city.
So that's a, that's a good segue into my final question on this, in this area. And I'm going to go ahead and start with you, Jeremy Matlow. Obviously homelessness has become more of a visible issue for all of us. Where are we falling short in addressing this complicated challenge? And you have 45 seconds.
Heartbreakingly, I think we're not addressing the homeless population as if they're people. You know, what we've seen over the last year, we've seen raids on encampments. The city of Tallahassee just got notice of a lawsuit of homeless individuals who are suing the city because their personal possessions, their IDs were taken from Lake Ella when it was raided. We've seen the attacks on city walks. So we have to act like and acknowledge that the homeless are our neighbors. They live here, too. They're part of our city. They're part of our constituency. And when we look at the funding needed for rapid rehousing and to actually home everybody, those numbers are attainable. We got numbers from people who work in services that could start around $8 billion annually to where we could start housing the chronically homeless, the veterans in our population, but we have to do that. And again, we have to put the resources behind the priority.
Thank you. David Bellamy, same question.
Could you ask a question again?
Sure. Homelessness has become a very visible issue. Where are we falling short in addressing this complicated challenge? 45 seconds.
We have not provided enough places for our homeless to live that they find acceptable as far as how they live. I think a lot of times, we try to put our standard of living on to them, and some of them are not happy with that and would choose not to take us up on it. And we say, well, this is it or nothing. A homeless person costs society about $1,000 a day if you include medical services. I've had patients in the hospital for six weeks that could have gone home after three days if they weren't homeless. Extra police, extra EMS. If you realize that you're paying as a society $1,000 a day, suddenly it doesn't sound so expensive to build a place where homeless people can live with a good quality of life that they find acceptable. If, if you don't do anything, you are not saving money. If you don't do anything, you are spending $1,000 a day.
Thank you.
Okay. David Bellamy, let's stick with you for a moment, or one minute, actually.
All right.
Here. What do you believe is the major point differentiating you from your opponent right next?
I believe I am much better at getting along with people, making compromises, delivering results, understanding that you can't always get everything you want. You've got to compromise. My mother was the mayor in the 80s, and I still have patients that will come to me and say, when I met with your mother, I didn't get anything I wanted, but I left there liking her, respecting her, and willing to work with her again. That's how you get things done. And I think I am much better at that. Through my time as a policeman, you learn how to deal with anybody, everybody. Time as a doctor, I have to be able to talk with anybody, everybody. As chairman of the surgery department at the hospital, I have to get results from people that don't want to give me what I want, and I have to figure out a way to make that work. I can't just say, I'm in charge, it's going to be this way. So my ability to build coalitions, to get people to compromise, to come back with an answer is what differentiates me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Matlow, if you could talk about your difference from Mr. Bellamy there.
Yeah, sure, thank you. And I think you're on to something. I don't think David Bellamy is really offering differing policy positions. It's really about how we're going to lead our city. I've been proud of uniting broad bipartisan coalitions to oppose Doak Campbell Stadium tax increases, to stand with our neighbors in Kalaarn against road projects that were threatening their way of life. The real difference we see in our campaigns is, my campaign's being funded by everyday small-dollar contributions. David's campaign's being funded by big special interests who are on the receiving ends of millions of dollars of city contracts. And you look at our political contributions. David Bellamy gives money to right-wing extremists like Matt Gaetz, Ron DeSantis, and encouraging to flip the House back to the Republican Party. My political linings are more in line with the people of Tallahassee.
All right, we're going to talk more about those points later on here, but for the moment, we're going to talk about, in fact, pretty soon, because we're going to talk about pay and cash. In the wake of a reorganization by the city manager, there's been criticism of executive salaries among top city staff. Do we have a pay problem at the top, and what should be done to address it? 45 seconds, Jeremy Matlow.
Sure, we have a huge HR problem in the city of Tallahassee. This has been exposed in audit reports, going back to Rick Fernandez's first reorg, when a lot of people circumvented the rules to get employment and large pay raises. Some of the individuals mentioned in the most recent pay increases are great city employees. They may be worthy of that money. I'm not arguing that, but the way we go about creating new positions and not only having a single applicant, I'm sure there's hundreds of employees in the city of Tallahassee who would have liked to apply to be city manager or assistant city manager, but these positions aren't being put out there in a way that includes everybody and has public buy-in before they happen. So we get to the point where a speaker in public comment is telling the commissioners that these raises are coming down when commissioners don't even know about it. That's wrong, and again, it goes back to the management of the city.
David Bellamy, same question.
So when they first came out with those new promotions, I was worried because I thought everybody was getting more money. I was happy to see that those promotions actually saved the city about $200,000 a year. I do think we have a problem with hiring people that were predetermined to be hired for that position. I don't think we do a good job of looking at outside candidates that aren't in the city. I do worry that there's too much nepotism in our city government, the way it's run from the administrative side. But I think it was good that in doing those promotions, they lowered the number of positions, actually, and saved the city about $200,000 a year.
All right, David Bellamy, you have an ad out labeling your opponent millionaire Matlow. Matlow is required to file a detailed financial disclosure with the city, which listed his net worth at $1.6 million, but you won't be required to release your net worth unless you're elected. But we're going to give you an opportunity today. What is your net worth? Are you a millionaire? Is personal wealth an issue in this campaign? 45 seconds.
So much of my wealth is tied up in TOC that I don't know what the exact amount is, but yes, I am a millionaire. But I'm not trying to act like just the average person who's fighting for people because I'm one of them. I think it's disingenuous the way he's tried to portray himself when he is, in fact, a millionaire, to tell people that you don't think that they need a raise because it's not the raise you want to give them, but at the same time, to try to double your salary all the while acting like you need it, just doesn't seem, it seems disingenuous. But yes, I'm a millionaire, too.
Thank you.
You know, I just get a kick out of one millionaire calling another one rich.
Jeremy Matlow, same question. Is, is personal wealth an issue in this campaign?
Well, look, David Bellamy is far wealthier than I am. You can look at the value of our homes. You can conclude $1 million based on the value of businesses, as he stated earlier, but I'm a strong champion for raising the pay of people in the city of Tallahassee. I'm not sure David Bellamy has gone on the record for that. Right now, the city of Tallahassee pays $10 an hour to its lowest-paid employees. That's 50% less than what my businesses pay. That's not right. I grew up working in restaurants. I worked 60, 70, 80 hours a week, restaurant managing, most of my 20s, and had nothing to show for it at the end of the day. When I was working those jobs, I can remember getting a throat infection so bad that I had to go to CVS, and I got that prescription for a painkiller and an antibiotic, and I could only afford to pick up one. I know the struggles of the working class in the city, and I'm happy to stand behind them.
Thank you. So speaking of pay, Commissioner Matlow, in 2020, you proposed a ballot measure to bring city commission salaries up to that of their Leon County Commission colleagues from $39,588 to make $80,289. Do you still favor that concept?
I think it's up to the citizens of Tallahassee to look into. You know, at the time, Mayor Daley was pushing for a charter review committee because he has a desire to establish a strong mayor position. I did not want to see that move forward. I did bring this because it would go to the voters to decide. For me personally, it doesn't affect me because I do have a second job, but a lot of commissioners don't. A lot of people stepping up to run for office right now, the city commission salary is their only salary, so I think it's worthy of a public discussion, but the commissioners aren't going to decide, the public will.
Will you advocate for getting it on the ballot?
If, if the public steps up and advocates for it, no, I'm not going to ask for it to be put on the ballot.
Okay. Mr. Bellamy, same question. Do you favor that idea of raising the city commission salary?
No, the last thing we need are our city commissioners looking at that as their only full-time job, a job that they now cannot do without. When my mother was a mayor and commissioner, everybody on the city commission had a job. They were average citizens who went to work, came to the city hall, made policy, made ordinances, and supervised the city manager. We have got to get back to that. We need less people that look at being the city commission member as their main identity, and we certainly don't need people that become financially dependent on it and can't afford to lose that spot.
All right. David Bellamy, you've contributed money over the years to the Republican candidates, including Ron DeSantis, Matt Gaetz, Kevin McCarthy, and Steve Sutherland. Commissioner Matlow, you've given to Bernie Sanders, Val Demings, Anna Eskamani, and Andrew Gillum. What do these contributions say about your closest-held political beliefs? 45 seconds. Mr. Bellamy?
Well, I'd be hard-pressed to find any politician I like everything about. When I gave money to Republicans, I was giving money to people that were identified as politicians that were good for the delivery of medicine in Florida. They chose to support doctors, not insurance companies, doctors, not hospitals. And I always made it a point to try to make sure that they had not been involved in any extremist behavior. When I gave money to DeSantis, I had no idea what he was going to do during COVID. Matter of fact, when I was interviewed, even though Jeremy Flyer says that, I said I'd do it again, I said, after COVID, I would not support him again. So the same with DeSantis. He was a little-known Florida House member that was living in his father's shadow, who had been identified as good for medicine. So I can't find a single politician I like everything about, but I supported people that supported the delivery of medicine and had been identified by the Florida Medical Association as such.
Thank you. Jeremy Matlow, same question.
Of everyone you designate, the people who are best for healthcare and medicine are the people I donated to, people who are advocating for Medicare for All, so we can all be covered and have access to a doctor. But there's a huge difference here, right? 75% of Bellamy's contributions have gone to Republicans. Ninety days before the January 6th insurrection, he was donating to flip the House back to Republicans. And while he said he wasn't happy with DeSantis' COVID response, his personal Facebook shows in 2020, he was posting a side-by-side of Ron DeSantis's response versus New York's response, and it said Florida rules. So I'm not sure if I should believe his Facebook post or what he's saying now about his support for DeSantis.
And this is a good follow-up. Mr. Bellamy, you've said that except for COVID, you were, quote, "pretty happy" with DeSantis. Tell us what specific qualities and policies you've been pleased with. Forty-five seconds.
I wasn't really happy with the choice between him and Gillum. I thought that he was going to be more conservative than I like. I like moderates, people in the middle of the road, who represent probably 95% of America, moderates, in the middle. So I was skeptical. When the first thing he did was threw off all of the sugar shill lobbyists off of the Okeechobee Water Management, I started to realize, well, maybe he's not quite as bad as I thought. And that impressed me. It wasn't until things started getting off the rails with the mask ordinance, the hiring of Dr., I don't know how to pronounce his name, Dr. Lopato, which was clearly a political hire over COVID, that's when I started to be dissatisfied. But at first, I thought he was much more moderate than I thought he was going to be, and that made me happy.
Thank you. And Jeremy Matlow, what's something positive DeSantis has done as governor?
Well, first off, Ron DeSantis ran an ad before he was elected saying, "Build the wall with his children." He was a hard-right Republican partisan candidate, so it's hard to believe anybody didn't see that before he was elected. But Ron DeSantis has done some favorable things. I think he has made some efforts to protect our waterways. You know, he's actually vetoed some of the most extreme proposals that have come out of the Florida legislature. So is he wrong all the time? No. But are the bad things he's doing detrimental to the people of Tallahassee? Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, please excuse a kind of long run in here to put this next question into a context, and I think the meaning will become clear here very shortly. This year, of course, we've seen an unusually large number of candidates running for both city and county commission seats with no one coming, going unchallenged in this cycle, and a lot of the candidates lining up on one side or the other on issues like growth and the Doak Campbell Stadium situation. David Bellamy, to start with you, your campaign shares the same consultant as Mayor John Daley's. And Jeremy Matlow, you have contributed to Adner Marsalan, who's running against your colleague Diane Williams Cox, and also given to several county commission candidates at the same time. We've also seen a proliferation of electioneering websites supporting and attacking slates of candidates. So to what extent do you see slates here, unofficial or otherwise, and are both sides vying for control of the city and county commissions and by extension Blueprint 2020? A long question, you get a long answer. A minute 30. Mr. Bellamy, you first.
There's a lot to that. You know, I hired my consultant because I wanted somebody that didn't lobby Tallahassee, who didn't live in Tallahassee and had been connected to the trial, and who was a professional. I mean, he ran President Obama's campaign in Florida, he ran Hillary Clinton's campaign in Florida. He is a professional. And I was very excited when he was willing to do my campaign. When I called him, I thought mine would be too small and he wouldn't be willing to do it. Somewhere or another, Daley heard about him and asked me if it was okay if he hired him. I said, well, I don't want to keep the guy from work, sure. But I am very happy with who I selected as my campaign manager. He's not connected to these groups, he's not connected to all these 401, these 501(c)(3), c)(4s. As far as who's vying for control, I think both sides want control. I think we've, and we've got to be careful of listening to either side completely. Probably both sides have a little bit of truth in them. But I think what is happening is our citizens are waking up to the fact that life in Tallahassee was pretty good if you didn't live in our impoverished areas, and we quit paying attention to our local elections. And we ended up with people in there that aren't doing the things they said they would do. We ended up with people in there that are now in prison or going to prison. And I think you're seeing an awakening of people that want to take their city government and get people in that they like, trust, and respect.
Okay, Mr. Matlow, again, and if you could reference the Adner-Marsalan situation as well, please.
Sure, I'll start there. I 100% endorse Adner Marsalan for city commission, seat five. But to answer your broader question, what we're seeing in our community isn't necessarily two sides, right? We're seeing one side, which has been this big money establishment system that has dominated local elections, right? They pick a candidate, they all have hundreds of companies, hundreds of LLCs, stack thousands of dollars, and they're able to funnel big money into the candidates they support. Historically, we look at the record, most of their candidates have supported their agenda. Most of the people funneling money into campaigns are on the receiving end of millions of dollars in public contracts. So what you're seeing is, for the first time, all across the city and county, everyday people are standing up and realizing that they can run too, that they don't need the backing of big powerful interests to win. And it's not a slate, there's multiple people in each race. There's a slate, I think, of people who want to keep control of city, and then there's just a broad outpouring of candidates jumping into races because they want to see Tallahassee be a better place. They want to see our neighborhoods protected. They want to see our trees protected. They want to see our waterways protected. And they want to see the corruption and the giveaways and the insider deals stop. They look at Doak Campbell, and that's just icing on the cake. That is such a testament to exactly how some of the things are operating right now, and we got to fix it. So I'm so proud of everybody who stepped up to run for office this year, and I hope a lot of them win.
A connected follow-up for both of you, if we could here. In the last few years, we routinely see that three-to-two split on particularly big issues on the city commission, such as development ethics. We've already talked about that. So Commissioner Matlow, what's the first thing you would seek to change course on if that three-to-two balance shifts to progressive candidates?
Sure. Well, first off, I just wanted to dispel the notion that every vote is three-to-two. You know, 85% of the votes we take are doing the business of the city of Tallahassee, making sure utilities are provided, making sure our parks are taken care of, making sure we're investing some things appropriately. Where you see the three-to-two votes are on the, when the worst decisions in our community are being made. That's adding Wilani to the urban services area, 4,000 acres, never been seen before, for one private property owner. You see those on Doak Campbell Stadium. You saw that on closing the lobbyist loophole, so political consultants could stop lobbying. So those are the issues that will be addressed. Oh, and you saw it on the city manager.
And what is the first thing you'll seek to change course on if a three-to-two balance shifts?
Sure. It's city management. You know, our current city manager was installed in the dark of night. I was one of only two public attendees at that meeting. And if you look at it right now, he wouldn't even been city manager if it hadn't been for two votes of people who have now been indicted. We need a reset at city, at city hall. We need to look across our country and find the best qualified candidate to lead our city.
All right. And Mr. Bellamy, the same question. What's the first thing you'll do? And I'd love to hear your response on the city manager comments that Mr. Matlow just shared.
So I'm not running to fire the city manager. I am running because as a police officer, I worked in the areas of Bond, Lake Bradford, Alabama Street, areas that looked the same as they did 30 years ago, as if you stepped off a time machine. If Reese Goode is willing to work with me to change that and change the standard of living in those areas, he is welcome to stay, probably. If he's an obstructionist to this, I'll be the first to vote for him to leave. Was there more to the question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, what, beyond that, what's the first thing you would do, you know, with the...
The first thing I would do is demand that maintenance of our impoverished area is at the same standard of maintenance of our nicer areas of Tallahassee. It is not okay that you can drive down Saxon Street and see burned-out light bulbs on the light posts. It's not okay that on Holton Street, there are empty lots where garbage is acceptably thrown in there. And I don't mean a bottle, I mean bags of trash. That would never be accepted on the north side of town. Why in God's great name do we accept it there? And I will demand that that stops.
Thank you. All right, so we've been asking all the questions. Now it's your turn. What's one question you'd like to ask your opponent? One caveat, it can't be about pizza. We covered that in a previous forum. You'll have one minute to answer. David Bellamy, you get to ask the first question.
You know, I guess, you know, it goes back to what I asked at Tiger Bay. I mean, sometimes why do you seem so mean? I know you say it's passion that gets it done, but when that hurts your ability to bring people together and get a compromise, you know, why do you act so mean or mad?
Again, that's an odd question, right? I don't perceive myself as mean. We work with everybody. The only person who's ever really said I seem mean has been Dr. Bellamy. So I'm not sure how, quite sure how to answer that question. But you know, when all this is done, let's go get a cup of coffee. I wish you'll get to know me.
Jeremy Matlow, your turn.
Sure. So Dr. Bellamy just made a point, which I 100% agree with, which is, we need to invest in neighborhoods that need help the most. I grew up in Providence. This infrastructure does look exactly the same, but yet budgets are tight at the city, Blueprint, and the county. So where would you look to take funding away? Because we need millions of dollars to go into these neighborhoods. Where would you find millions of dollars in the budget?
So first off, for the things that I want to immediately do, which is return the quality of South Side to the quality of the North Side through the delivery of maintenance, that shouldn't cost extra money. We already have those services. We just don't apply them in that area. We don't allow, trash gets picked up in the North Side of town. When trash ends up on a empty lot on the South Side of town, it should be picked up. These are not new programs. These are not new employees. It's just holding the city to a standard everywhere the same. And I will say, as far as everyone, I'm the only one saying that you're not always nice. I mean, we had an outside entity that is an expert on HR relations that said he's got to have a mediator or moderator to meet with Ben Pingree. That's the kind of stuff I'm talking about that's not productive.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so numerous neighborhoods within Tallahassee and Leon County are struggling with poverty. We've talked a little bit about that. What role should local economic development efforts and development initiatives play in promoting a more equitable prosperity? And what's one specific plan that you would implement to make meaningful progress in this generational challenge? And you've got one minute, and David Bellamy, we'll start with you.
So the best way to get our impoverished areas in better shape is to provide them with good careers. Again, a job with a mandatory minimum wage of $15 an hour still only gives you $31,000. $21,000 a year is listed as poverty. The Organization for Women's Health has a more functional poverty rating, says it's 41,000. So to expect somebody to toil their life away at an endless job for $31,000 at a big box store is unrealistic. We need to provide careers, again, with opportunity for retirement, opportunity for advancement. And as much as Blueprint has disappointed me with the FSU money, OEV does have about 17 businesses that are looking to come to Tallahassee, many of them wanting to go to Innovation Park, which was made for industry, or the airport, where you will not hurt the quality of lives of others, and there's only man-planted pine trees to cut down. Those places will be in the poorest zip code in the state of Florida, and many of those jobs will be jobs that allow promotions, learning a trade you can take elsewhere. And you're asking, what would be my first initiative?
Thank you.
The city needs to make sure that we encourage that.
Thank you. Thank you for your answer. Same question, Jeremy Matlow.
Sure. I think there's a lot of people in Tallahassee right now that have great business ideas. And if they could just have access to enough capital, enough training, enough help, they could accomplish them. I started my business on Gain Street with just a few thousand dollars in my pocket. The permitting process at the city was so arduous that I had to turn to the public and do crowdsourcing to make money. We still didn't have enough money to open. But at that time, the CRA had a small-dollar grant program or loan program. We received a $10,000 loan from the CRA. We didn't have the credit to go to traditional lenders, so had it not been for that assistance, we probably never would have been open. Since then, we've created over 100 jobs. So when I look at $27 million going to luxury stadium improvements, we're so out of touch with the small local businesses in our town. What would my solution be? The same thing I proposed during COVID. Make capital available for small businesses that need it. Make $10,000, $50,000 loan and grant programs, and make them accessible to people that live on the south side of our city.
Thank you. And for a follow-up question, I'll go ahead and stay with you, Jeremy Matlow. Do we have a gentrification problem in Tallahassee? And if so, what's one way you can help fix that? Forty-five seconds.
Sure. It goes back to development and keeping things local, right? We keep encouraging to have big national developers come in, clear-cut, take out neighborhoods. Fannie Way took out some neighborhoods. But we're not investing in the people who actually lived there first. So we need to take a step back and say, how can we grow that community where we're actually keeping local wealth in local hands? How can we make sure when communities are upcoming that there's local homeowners there, local business owners there? And are our tax dollars going to support keeping that money locally, or all of our efforts going to recruit national businesses that are exacerbating the problem?
Thank you. Same question.
Yes, we do have a gentrification problem. Frenchtown is one of the oldest predominantly black neighborhoods in the entire state, and I would argue that the heart of Frenchtown has no resemblance to the heart of Frenchtown that I grew up seeing. The first way you fix gentrification is, again, fix poverty. People with money don't get displaced. Fix poverty, you fix gentrification. The city can also do it through ordinances and trying to control who builds where, but some of that needs to be done before the project shows up. The last thing is, we have to be realistic about building houses in this city. We want 30,000 houses over the next 20 years, and there's not room for it. My mother helped write our first comprehensive plan that was passed in 1990, and my poor sweet mother's been dead for 30 years, and we still have that same comprehensive plan. If we don't expand the USA some, so there's other places to build houses, we will continue taking over neighborhoods that don't have the money to stay there.
Thank you. And we'll stay with you, David Bellamy, for another follow-up. Local government is criticized by some citizens as being more responsive to the business and the development community than to ordinary citizens. Is this perception fair? And if so, what should be done about it? 30 seconds.
Not being a guy that does building, I don't know if it's fair, but whether it's fair or not, perception is reality, and the perception must be changed. I do think one thing that is clear is if you have a lot of money and you're a developer, that you probably have much easier access to having your side heard. If you don't have that, you have to go to a city commission meeting and wait for two hours to be allowed your three minutes to talk, not knowing if you'll be there for two hours to four hours. So I do think they certainly have more access. We've got to find a way to allow the average citizen to have more say in what is done. I've been to some of those events where nobody of importance comes, just some mid-level management to hear ideas from citizens, and you think it probably goes nowhere after that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner, your response?
Is our city more responsive to the business community?
Yes.
Was that the question?
Yeah. Would you like me to repeat the whole thing?
Sure, that would be great.
Okay. Local government is criticized as being more responsive to business and the development community than to citizens. Is this a fair perception? And if so, what should be done about it?
Yeah, it's 100% a fair perception. Our city right now is working hand-in-hand with developers, and we're seeing really a lot of environmental destruction. On the Canopy project, we saw the largest fine ever issued to that developer, and the city didn't bring it, but the state had to, right? Because we're pushing things along so fast that we can't even hit the brakes and say, wait, there is room to compromise. I was disappointed when neighbors brought great solutions to Wilani and offered to make it protect our wildlife, but yet that was overruled. The opinions of our neighborhoods are neglected and ignored time and time again.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow, you've often decried developer giveaways and vanity projects. What's an example during your tenure of a specific development you supported? And what was its economic impact?
Sure. Developments I've supported, I supported some of Walls. I moved forward with the English property development. We looked at, we supported projects out near Bannerman Road, lots of road projects, lots of development projects. It's not about who develops or who grows, it's about how we're using our public tax dollars. The giveaways are $80 million to the Northeast Gateway for a road project for neighborhoods that haven't even been built yet, when it's skipping the line of Tharp Street, where children walk on dirt, dirt side streets that don't even have sidewalks. So when I say developer giveaways, they need to take a step back and let our whole community share in the prosperity that our tax dollars can create.
Thank you. David Bellamy, you've taken thousands of dollars from some of the biggest developers in town. What should voters take away from that?
I don't think they should be surprised that they gave to me. Jeremy called many of them criminals. Jeremy made a video one time saying, "I'm coming after you for you so-and-so. I'm coming after you so-and-so." To think that they would support me over him is, I mean, why wouldn't they? They shouldn't be surprised a bit. That is a bed that Jeremy made. He could have worked on relationships with those folks, and instead, he's made this bed, yes, lying. You know, I haven't promised anybody anything in this race. All I've said as I'm running, I'll be fair, I'll be honest, I won't play favorites. And people that are unhappy with Jeremy that gave them the last time are giving to me this time. And again, like I said, one of my number-one fundraisers is Jeremy. You can't threaten people like that and expect to work with them in the future and be surprised when they support your opponent.
Thank you.
All right, we're shifting over to the lightning round now. The way this works is I'm looking for one-sentence answers. Oftentimes, it's a Oftentimes, it's a yes-or-no question, so you can give me a yes, and then answer with a sentence. You can include an "and," maybe even a "because," but, you know, not too much of a run-on sentence. We'll start simply. How many city commission meetings have you attended, and how many have you spoken at, and on what topics? David Bellamy.
So growing up with my mom, I've probably been to hundreds. In more contemporary times, I've probably only been to five or six. I don't speak at them, but I watch them all on the internet a few days later when they can be compressed.
Okay. I think I know your answer to this, Jeremy.
I've been to a lot, William.
What does the word "progress" for Tallahassee mean to you, Jeremy Matlow?
It means all of our neighborhoods share in the prosperity, and the neglected communities we've seen finally get investment.
Thank you. David Bellamy, one sentence. What does the word "progress" for Tallahassee mean to you?
Well, maybe a bit more in a sense. I was adopted about an hour away from Harlan County, Kentucky, so I know I had equal odds of being in a coal mine right now as I do a doctor. To me, progress means everybody having an equal chance to succeed the way I have been fortunate enough to do. Because again, fate could have taken me another way. Everybody needs the same opportunity. That's progress.
All right. What's one pledge you would make to voters right now that you will accomplish if elected? David Bellamy.
I will change the maintenance of our impoverished areas infrastructure.
Jeremy Matlow.
I would pledge to our neighborhoods that their concerns will be part of the discussion and implementation of every policy we make going forward.
Jeremy Matlow, would you ever support the sale of Tallahassee's public utilities?
Heck, no. No way.
David Bellamy?
No.
What would you like to see done with the old TPD site once they move to Northwood? David Bellamy.
I think it might be a good place for another Georgia Belle Dickinson-type apartment for older folks that are on a limited income.
Okay. Jeremy Matlow.
I would like to see our community come to the table and decide what type of public facility it could continue to be.
Who are you endorsing at the top of the city ticket in the mayor's race, Jeremy Matlow?
Any of the candidates. That's not Mayor John Daly.
Okay. David Bellamy.
I am not endorsing anybody. I've got my hands full with this one.
All right. Days before the election, will you attend this year's Tallahassee Chamber of Conference at Amelia Island? Why or why not? David Bellamy.
I have never been to that conference, and I'm not going this time.
Jeremy Matlow.
I'll be knocking the doors, talking to voters. It's right before the election.
Okay. What's the biggest investment that needs to be made in the South Side? Jeremy Matlow.
Sidewalks and stormwater improvements.
Okay. David Bellamy.
Careers, careers, careers. Everything else will follow.
All right. City manager serves at the pleasure of the city commission. Reese Code's been serving the city manager since 2018. What letter grade would you give to Reese Code this year, and why? David Bellamy.
C+. I think that most of the infrastructure of the city works well. I think we were very fortunate to have bought natural gas years ago at the current rate, or our utilities would be up 50%. Reese has got to realize that whether he thinks he deserves it or not, he has an image problem that he must fix.
Okay.
I also expect him to treat—I also expect him to treat subordinates with respect, and that's why I give him a lower grade.
Okay. Jeremy Matlow.
For most of those reasons, I give him a U for unsatisfactory.
Okay. Name one specific thing the city is not spending enough money on, and one thing the city is spending too much money on. Jeremy Matlow.
Too much money on luxury stadium improvements and developer giveaways, and not enough money on basic neighborhood infrastructure.
David Bellamy.
So I don't think we know what we don't spend enough money on, because I don't know if we've really had an audit that looks at that. I think in the short term, yes, too much money was spent on FSU. The—but we spend too little on, again, we don't maintain all of Tallahassee as we do maintain some of the nicer areas, and that must change.
What is the single biggest thing you've done in the community to make the city a better place? David Bellamy.
I think being a police officer. I mean, when you show up at somebody's door, someone's car wreck, and the first thing they say is, "Thank God you're here," you feel like you're doing something. When you're doing CPR on somebody in front of their family, you feel like you're doing something. When—I'll never forget the night I returned $20 to a homeless man who was beaten and robbed of the only money he had. I felt like I was serving my city every night I went home after that.
Okay. Jeremy Matlow, 30 seconds on that question.
Passing the Clean Energy Plan to transition our community to 100% renewable energy and supporting our two solar farms at the airport.
Okay. All right. You made it through the lightning round. Back to WFU.
Yes, and a light item that we have been talking about in a couple of other contexts in the course of our conversation here, starting with you, Mr. Matlow. What was your position—I think we know—on the recent allocation of $27 million to renovate Joe Campbell Stadium from the money required to be spent for economic development projects? But beyond that, explain why you did not favor that.
Yeah, sure. The luxury stadium improvements at Joe Campbell was probably the most egregious waste of taxpayer funds, and frankly, betrayal of the public trust that we've seen over the last year. This money was meant for economic development. We asked the voters to trust our government to allocate 12% for economic development improvements. If stadium improvements were on the agenda, it could have been put on a ballot. It wasn't. So we took money away from small local businesses. We took money away from recruiting new businesses to our town. And frankly, there's a wide range that we could use economic development dollars for, but we didn't give an opportunity for anybody to propose alternatives. The city commission and county commission were given one week's notice before this even popped up on an agenda. I found out about it when a reporter asked me if I knew anything about it. I hadn't heard. That's the way things are being cooked up behind the scenes at Blueprint, and that needs to come to an end.
Okay. David Bellamy, your thoughts again on that project, and an explanation as to what led you to those conclusions?
I don't think anybody that voted for Blueprint thought it was going to go to the boosters. Even boosters like myself never thought money I gave—I voted for on Blueprint would go to that. Blueprint was originally just for infrastructure. Probably should go back to that, no discretionary spending. I do think a better leader, a more effective leader, could have fixed this problem. I mentioned that Jeremy wouldn't even return the call of the booster president, and he actually made fun of me. Why would I call him? Well, A, he called you, and B, if we could have gotten the entity asking the money to lower it to 10 million, I could have said, you know, I'll do my best to stop this if you don't compromise for 10. If you'll compromise for 10, we'll make the announcement, holding hands on the front steps. The community had shown a willingness to compromise for 10, but the take-no-prisoner, scorched-earth, all-or-nothing left us paying $27 million to FSU plus $14,000 for a hostile workplace investigation. I think that better leadership could have nipped that in the bud early on. Build compromises, build coalitions.
Terrific. Which leads us into a follow-up then, Mr. Bellamy, now that it is a done deal. What can the city do to ensure that Blueprint investment pays off for residents, including those who don't attend FSU football games?
I don't think they can. I mean, FSU's offered to open it up for more community events. I don't think we can do enough there that makes up for $27 million, at least not enough that I think there's demand for. I suppose some concerts could be done there. But we didn't work that out ahead of time. Again, if I was there, I would have said to the medical school, hey, you've got a psychiatry residency coming. If you want this money, you need to find a way to have those psychiatry residents serve the impoverished areas in their clinics there. If we're going to give you money, you're at least going to give something back in return. I don't think more public access to the stadium will make up for $27 million.
Okay. Same question here, Mr. Matlow.
I mean, largely, I think what Blueprint needs to do going forward is bring the Intergovernmental Management Committee under the sunshine. State law requires that committees of that sort meet in public, and then maybe we would have known that this was coming. We would have known whether they were considering it before it got to our elected officials. If the public had more notice, I think they would have showed up early before the train left the station. It wasn't until the second or third meeting that the public showed up, because the elected officials let them know what was happening. The public needs to know what's happening on the front end, so these terrible decisions don't continue.
Okay. Talk a little bit about climate change. It can sometimes feel like it's a distant concern, but it's something that we struggle with, even though we have other challenges in our community that we also struggle with. And right now, we're seeing a record heat wave in Europe and really across the United States as well. Some Tallahassee residents are opening up their highest utility bills ever after a stretch of 100-degree days. How urgent is this problem? And what can we do? What can the city do to actually make a difference? David Bellamy.
So one thing the city's done is its pledge to get away to all renewable resources, I think, by 2050. And the cars that we're buying and the light trucks are already ahead of schedule going to all-electric or hybrid for emergency vehicles. The city—if—I don't think we have the money to do it right now, but when we do, incentives to put things up such as solar panels. But I think we've also got to look at something we have more immediate control over, and that's the quality of our water. Our sewer system's been under a consent order for over 10 years. We dump massive amounts of raw sewage right into our own drinking water cisterns. We've got to fix that. The sewer water advocacy group came and actually asked Jeremy to help them make this more public, and he voted with a policy that makes it so we can have a consent order given, and there's still no press release given by the city. It's—we can have an effect on global warming. We can have a bigger effect on our own water by more transparency with our sewer system. There was a big article in it today. We dumped 600,000 gallons of raw sewage into a tributary to Lake Munson about eight months ago, and we wonder why now Lake Munson is a big pile of algae.
Thank you. Mr. Matlow.
Thank you. First of all, that's not true. The entire public is notified when there are spills. But looking at climate change, this has to be our number-one issue. It may seem like it's far in the future, but if we don't address it now, we're going to be too late. I was proud to be endorsed by Climate Cabinet that's working on issues just like this, because when we look at what we can do locally, we're so fortunate to own our own utility. We are literally in control of our future. So yes, I did advocate and supported the transition to 2050, but we were pushing to get it done even sooner, and it's going to be part of the plan when it comes back. How can we do it by 2040? How can we do it by 2035? Because we have to keep our foot on the gas to achieve this. Currently, we are adding solar farms. We just—all city-owned buildings are served by solar power. Our entire fleet is going to be electric by 2035. We're making progress, but this is so urgent, we need to move faster.
Thank you.
Folks, let's move on to the non-controversial topic of ethics. And on ethics restrictions, Tallahassee city commissioners voted 3 to 2 this year, not to let voters decide through a referendum on whether to expand the independent ethics board's jurisdiction to Blueprint 2020 and the CRA. So should this go to voters for them to decide? In one minute, starting with you, Mr. Matlow.
Yeah, absolutely. I was—I supported that initiative. It doesn't matter if you sit as a city official, if you're serving as a CRA board member, or if you're serving as Blueprint. I'd like our county colleagues to come on board as well, because we need independent oversight. We've seen too much in this community to know what happens when there's not independent oversight. You know, we saw how Scott Maddox operated, the political consultants and lobbyists he was working with, how they were installing people that would do their bidding at top-level executive positions. You read that in the newspaper, and you're blown away. You're like, what is happening in the city of Tallahassee? So people very much want us to see, no matter what role we're playing, there's some sort of independent oversight.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bellamy, your thoughts?
I am fine with it going to the voters, but I think it should be solved by the city commission at the next meeting. Any committee or board you serve on, where the only requirement to be on that is that you are a city commissioner, should come under the ethics board. I don't fully understand why we even have that argument. When we asked the question, the city attorney said, well, we can't do that because we can't supervise the county commissioners. And my question was, why are we even asking if we can supervise? Of course, we can't supervise the county commissioners. But the—any thing that a city commissioner does as a city commissioner should come under the ethics board. Bring it to a vote if you want, but I'd rather see the city commission do it itself next meeting.
All right. And a follow-up here, as long as we're on that topic, since we recently saw another mayor and former city commissioner indicted for corruption charges. We saw the FBI investigation, the connections to those ensnared, and how it became a campaign attack line. So starting with you, Mr. Bellamy, in 45 seconds, could you tell us, is it fair game to connect your opponent to Gillum and Maddox, and why?
You know, I think that when he used to say, "I'm awful," and anybody that ever dealt with Maddox is awful, I thought it was terrible. That's not true. And I think he's now seeing, when you look at his close relationship with Gillum, they shared a stage together, they endorsed each other, they were on flyers with each other. I mean, using Jeremy's rationale, not mine, using Jeremy's rationale, that relationship makes him ineligible to be a city commissioner. He should resign right now. I don't think that he knew what Gillum was doing. I don't think he approves of what Gillum was doing. But it's time for him to reciprocate that and concede that just because I knew Scott Maddox doesn't mean I'm a criminal either, and I'm not a bad guy. His relationship with Gillum was much more stronger politically than mine ever was with Maddox. And to say I'm bad is to be saying he himself is bad.
And your response, Mr. Matlow?
Sure. And I did support Gillum's run for governor against Ron DeSantis, as did the majority of Tallahassee. The criticisms about Scott Maddox aren't about whether David Bellamy is friends with Scott Maddox. It's about whether the machine that let Scott Maddox do what he was able to do by funneling campaign contributions, by setting up political committees, and the way they operated was part of the larger problem we were experiencing in Tallahassee. David Bellamy could have looked to any political consultant, anybody across the country, yet he chose someone whose office was at Scott Maddox's office up until the year that Scott Maddox was arrested. And they try to say that there's some sort of distance between them. All of the people that signed a letter asking Scott Maddox to come back for his great leadership are supporting David Bellamy's campaign. They're not supporting my campaign. That's the difference.
One last question. The league's going to give it to you.
Okay. All right. Go ahead and start with you, Jeremy Matlow. During its October 27, 2021 meeting, the city commission adopted Resolution 21-R-30 in a 3 to 2 vote, which supports reproductive health care, including abortion. With the overturning Roe v. Wade, we are seeing prosecutors in Charlotte, Atlanta, and Indianapolis pledging not to use public resources to pursue abortion providers. New Orleans, meanwhile, is among the first cities to direct police not to investigate abortion cases, with several others following suit. Do you think the city should pursue these actions or others in the wake of the ruling? One minute.
Sure. And then I was on—I supported that motion when we saw what was coming down from the courts before it even came to fruition, because it's important to recognize the attack that we're under right now. The attack on women's rights, the attack on trans rights, the attack on gay rights. People are under attack in our community, and we need to stand up and support them. Frankly, what's happening at the Supreme Court right now, people are losing their confidence in that court completely. It's eroding the fabric of our very democracy. So when we face such injustice, when we see rights of women being taken away that are so fundamental to who they are, their bodies, and our trans men as well, we have to stand up and do whatever we can possible. up and do whatever we can possible. Do we have to investigate arrests and prosecute people in our community? No, we don't. Other communities are leading the way. We should step up as well.
Thank you.
Is that something you'd advocate for the city commission and call for a vote?
Absolutely.
Okay.
David Bellamy, same question.
So I think it was a bad decision. I don't like abortion, but it's for religious reasons, and my religious beliefs shouldn't have anything to do with what the government says somebody can or cannot do. I mean, the Planned Parenthood clinic in this city is named after my grandmother, Sally Bellamy. So I think it was bad. I also worry, what's going to be next? Are gay rights next? Are they going to, you already hear people rumbling about gay marriage. Are we really going to go backwards? I mean, one day, I hope to look at gay marriage the way we look at interracial marriage now. It's hard to believe there was a time when that wasn't okay. I've supported gay marriage for 30 years. I've actually been the officiant at a gay wedding. I worry the precedent that that sets that will set us backwards on all sorts of human rights that have just become so basic now.
Thank you.
All right. You made it to closing time, and that means you've got 90 seconds to talk directly to voters. You can certainly share your website, and, Mr. Bellamy, you get to start on this. 90 seconds.
You know, my family came here in 1918. My mother was the mayor in the '80s. I was a police officer in the '90s. My father was a physician here. I'm a physician here. My mother took me to a police explorer meeting in 1984, and I've been serving the city ever since. I love this city. But I started realizing that some of the areas aren't as good, and it's time for us to make sure that everybody in our city has the same opportunity to succeed. I got tired of seeing that we had the poorest zip code in the entire state. I was tired of seeing we had the highest per capita crime rate in the entire state, and I actually voted for Jeremy, hoping he would fix these. But I think, well-intentioned though he may be, he has focused all his efforts on Reese Goode and Ben Pingree at the expense of our impoverished, at the expense of our crime rate, and it is time somebody goes to work at City Hall as our commissioner that says, "My only role in life, in being here, is to bring up the quality of life for our impoverished." I know it sounds like a cliche, but doing that is a tide that will raise the entire city. As I talk to businesspeople on the Northeast Side, they understand that having the poor zip code and the highest crime rate makes it hard for their businesses to grow. It's hard to get employees to come here, and that if we fix that, the city grows. We tried to hire a HR expert for the hospital, and he wanted to come here from out of town, but his wife got on the internet and said, "We're not moving to Tallahassee. The crime rate's too high." There's somebody I know of that has a friend who's in Islamabad and wanted him to come visit, and the guy in Islamabad says, "I don't know. The chance of getting shot in Tallahassee is greater than it is in Islamabad." Somebody needs to focus that as their only reason for being there, and I'll do that, and I will bring results.
Thank you. Jeremy Matlow.
Thank you. I'm Jeremy Matlow and would love to earn the entire city's support. This was a great debate. I think what you saw is, my opponent really hasn't laid out any policy differences from us. The only differences we've been able to see are his willingness to take contributions from the same special interests that got us where we are today, and his support for, frankly, right-wing, extreme politicians. But that's okay, right? What we're doing in Tallahassee is bringing people together. So if you think our neighborhoods need a louder voice in our local government, if you think our small, local businesses need a louder voice, if you think people who are living in poverty, who don't have the opportunity and resources that other communities are getting, and if you think Dote Campbell Stadium was a terrible decision, and you want to